It's eight thirty. Let the flag of the United States of America to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Morning. We had a forum, so I will call the meeting to an end. And I'll ask for motion to approve the agenda in a minute.
So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those papers say aye.
Aye.
Closest sign, motion will carry.
Rich, I don't really have anything to discuss with you today. I will be gone. Giving a presentation at the Isle of Concrete bidding association workshop. Discussing our innovative ways that we paved our roads on our own day time.
Can you tell the state how to do it like Worth County, huh?
You know, in the state of Iowa, it seems like the counties are the innovators and the state picks up later.
Mm-hmm.
But that's just the way it's always been.
Right.
Smaller projects. A little bit more of a time, so, I mean.
As much as people still complain, we've probably got some of the best roads in the state of Iowa. Travel road, secondary roads, everything. I mean, you you just cross county lines and watch the roads narrow up and get.
I like to think that some people get accustomed to where they're at and they think everything's better somewhere else.
Yeah.
I think our guys do a good job, so.
Oh, yeah. I do, too. I agree.
But that's where I'll be. Uh, we did have a, I did receive some new drawings for our facility. On Friday, I have to review them yet. But we had to have a discussion on what we wanted to rearrange some things, so.
Okay.
We'll look at the shop a little closer with the foreman and a couple of people and try to get some stuff finalized there, so.
Rich and I were chatting, too, about that Friday, and so we've right now with Conservation Building getting finished. Um, they were gonna put transfer switch in there for a mobile generator.
Correct.
And with that power coming in right at the end of that building, that's where we're gonna get power for the rest of the buildings. I'm wondering if we shouldn't have Jason looking to just put in a rack and then a standby generator there for the entire facility.
All right. We could fuel our office, we could get our overhead doors open, and we could keep the fuel station open.
Yep. Wouldn't that be important in the event of emergency?
Yeah. Every, everything would be open. Instead of having, and you know, this is the reason why we're putting them together, instead of having a generator here and a generator there. We're not pulling a ton of power. We just got, you know, these guys can't be welding and doing other crap.
Right.
Maybe. I don't know. I don't know what sizing wise it would be, but as long as we can get lights, doors, and the ability to get in and out, that's, I think we should look into that. Then we could put it right there by Conservation Building where that power comes in, and then we could just go power to the office, power to the shop, and then Jim's got his power right there.
Who'd agree with that, so it's a good idea.
We'll get ahold of Jason and we'll just, or do you wanna, you gonna talk to him, I'm sure, so?
Yeah, we'll put it, we'll kind of, I'll put a note on plan.
Okay. Mention that to him and, and look at doing just a, a generator right there at that corner of Jim's building. Cause then we can branch off right to your other buildings.
Yep.
How do I say? If we get winter storms or we get tornadoes or something, I mean, then.
Any sort of disaster, we definitely possibly keep.
Right. Keep, keep that open and.
That'd be a good idea.
Cause most, we're gonna need the equipment, most likely anyways, and that kind of thing.
Or my equipment.
And, yeah, I guess depending on the situation, if we ended up being a, a spot to convene for, and see if we have the power there.
It could, it could be. If there's a more place that has backup power and we need room, we can clear bays out and.
We won't bring the big generators like they bring in on a semi, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know what the one setting that the sheriff's office is big enough for us, but maybe, I mean, I don't know.
Something similar to, yeah.
Something small standby.
Yeah.
Just to get us to open doors and.
And we shouldn't need a, a ton of generator, like I say. It's not like we're running high, high horsepower pumps or something like that where you need to have that extra stuff. It's just basically lights, doors, and electrical, you know, so it shouldn't be terrible.
Just don't oversize it.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Better be a little oversized on there.
Yep. Yeah, if you wanna mention that to Jason, that's what, do that, too.
Good. All right, uh.
We've got this UEI number. I don't.
So I got a call from Homeland Security FEMA Thursday or Friday, whatever it was last week. They need a resolution, basically, for us saying that we're letting secondary roads, which is a county entity, use our UEI number. Has to be in a resolution, so then they can release the funds.
It's really weird because we've turned grants in before with the U, same UEI number they were, never asked for. Well, can you use it? I don't quite understand the thinking, but.
Yep.
I guess.
So we're just gonna follow the process.
Kinda had the discussion, too. And maybe you guys aren't on board with it, but I'm thinking as much as it takes to get fifty thousand dollars in FEMA money, the work we put into trying to get it and the steps we gotta jump through is almost not worth our time. Because of all this, the, 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 the office staff and, and the guys out there having to try to collect everything, and then it's always something different. It's almost, it's almost, it almost costs us more money. I wouldn't say fifty thousand dollars worth, but it costs us a lot of money and just staff time to, to arrange everything for the small amount of return. So, I mean, I, I don't know how long it's going on this disaster, but.
Yeah, well.
We'll still turn our numbers and say, hey, we've got this much damage, but it might not be always worth our effort to chase all of that just because it's so time consuming and, and just.
It's, it's kinda like an event by event thing where if it's, if it's noticeable and you know we're gonna have a large expense, keep track. The guys can keep track, and if it doesn't go beyond that, then.
It seems like each event, they need more and more information, and we've always collected the same stuff every year. Now it's not good enough. It's gotta be more, and it's, I don't know, it gets frustrating, but we'll go, we'll go event by event, but sometimes it's just.
Maybe that'll change in the future.
Yeah?
Yeah.
We're not. So.
All right. So the resolution, twenty twenty five oh five. Where a secondary roads is requested to use the Worth County UEI number. This allows the secondary roads department to file any FEMA related documents with department, Homeland Security. Whereas Worth County Board of Supervisors approve the use of the UEI number and assume all risks involved. Now therefore it be resolved that the Board of Supervisors, Worth County, Iowa, on this third day of February twenty twenty five, approve the use of the UEI number and assume all risk involved in the secondary roads department. So I will take a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution. I'll second it.
Motion moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, will do it. We'll call, we'll, we'll burn.
Aye.
Stone.
Aye.
Smithy, aye. The resolution will pass. So is this signature? Is it just a yes, no's, or?
Sign right above your name.
Sign right above?
Yep. I didn't, I wrote that, but I didn't, I didn't get the lines put in for like a signature line. I'm not Excel savvy yet. The word savvy, I didn't get to tell you.
You, you did this on Excel. You're too savvy.
See what I mean? I'm not sure which program I didn't do.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah. They, they sent us one from another county to duplicate, so.
All right. Okay. Anything else for Rich?
I've got none.
Salt savings, good.
Seems to be. I'm glad we only ordered, we ordered like four hundred tons this year cause we had a full shed. Did you get it, Tim?
No.
Yeah, we got it.
No.
You have room for it? Could that show up?
Well, we need to quickly build another storage shed. Put a hoop in there.
We're not gonna just throw it out there to get rid of something, but you have to figure something out.
We tickled think if we didn't use any until next year.
Yeah.
Three ninety ten, I don't know.
Build another salt shed and have it delivered there, you know?
Oh, well, need it again. It'll be a frosty morning, bridges.
Yeah.
We got plenty of time before spring, so.
There's some of it.
Anyway, okay.
I'm playing up.
We'll go with the drainage. Was there any, any claims or first, I guess?
No claims, just one work order from Evans.
Oh, let's just.
Somebody's gonna fix that.
Broken man on DD number twenty eight.
Went through the proper steps and filed the orders, so.
He's getting there. We're working on it.
I'll motion to approve the work order.
Okay, so a second.
I'll second it.
Moving second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closest sign, motion will carry.
Yeah, and maybe I've already seen it. Did he get, did he build for Evans? Up there?
That looks good up there.
Now I'm turning away.
You've been up there, haven't you?
Yeah. I'll have to look back and see.
I'll just go back.
Kind of, kinda weird driving in the south now when I'm seeing those trees and just notice.
But he got, he got it all done, right?
Yeah, it's all done. I'll have to look back and see.
Gordy even mentioned that he did a good job. He saw it and was happy, so.
Okay.
Looks very good. Looks very good, so.
And we haven't heard anything else from the DNR on?
They called me, he called me last week one day. He was, had a couple minutes, and I just basically said, you guys are ready to cough up? I said, I can't go back to those landlords' house for another thirty grand. They're not gonna do it. Got a drains, like I said, worst case scenario is that we'll take a look at it next spring. If we need to pull it back up or we need to get straw mats out there, something like that, I'd be happy to do that part of it, get it seeded. And I, to me, I think we've got a better look at that outlet or the, even the owners, if they wanna walk down there, they can keep a better eye on that. You know, I mean, how many years ago they put that deck on top of that tile between the freezing and throwing that ruined that outlet and ruts and stuff? And it's like, no. We'll see. Instead of look into it more slowly and see what they say.
They're more than welcome to come talk with us.
Absolutely. All right. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. And there's no claims, right? Just payroll?
The payroll and insurance.
Motion to do the payroll forms.
I'll make a motion to do the payroll.
So a second.
I'll second.
Moving second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closest, same sign, motion will carry. Okay. Any reports today? None.
Not that I know of.
They'll be here next week. All right, uh, you, no payroll eligibility changes?
Um, yes, there are actually.
For Sheriff's.
Did you wanna talk about that one?
Clarification for Teresa, um, payroll. So on the second, obviously, we missed that for, I think I was here for that meeting.
Yes, you were.
But we, we forgot to put in the payroll, um, for Dave Ryerson for his change from chief deputy. Um, and then Terry brought this down on the sixth, but the meeting had already been adjourned, so we got it down on the thirteenth. So I just need some clarification because when Supervisor Smithy signed that, we had it basically saying that it would start on January second, but then Teresa got the thing saying that it wouldn't be effective until the thirteenth. Um, so then I talked to Mike Galloway?
Yep.
Okay. Um, he basically just said, you know, this is an easy fix. Uh, just have you guys approve it if that's what you wanna do. So I guess that's kinda why I'm here.
Yep.
Just to approve the back, the pay to back pay, basically?
Back pay, yep.
For a week.
And Adrian, I don't think you were here on the third, meeting for the thirteenth, so.
I was on your stick, I think.
I don't know if you actually saw that paperwork. I don't have your, your sign signature.
Twenty.
I guess, I think we can probably do it if Mike okayed it. I just think going forward, we do have a policy book here. And you guys, as well as everybody else, every department head needs to be aware of this when they wanna have salary changes, they need to do it properly. And like I say, if Mike's okay in this, I guess I'd be okay with it, but otherwise, we should probably leave it the way it is. If Mike hadn't approved it, I, I would've said, mm, no.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. There is a policy. There is, um, things need to be done before that date. But as someone new, I'm on the, look through that, too. It's, Jesse's still learning, you know? We all took, we all had the learning curve, too, so I'm, I'm fine. I, I would motion to approve the back pay. I'll second it.
Moving, moving second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion will carry.
So now did everybody have to sign the original?
No, it'd just be determined over the show.
You didn't say everybody had to sign. You just, everybody had to agree.
Had to agree to it.
Yeah.
Okay.
We should be, should be good for you, too.
Okay.
Okay.
There's something else that needs to be written and signed. We can sign it.
Okay.
And it's approved, so we can sign it anytime.
Let me get one more.
One more.
That one's on time.
Okay, good. Thank you. All right, this is for Ryan Hanson. Just increasing his hourly rate, longevity pay, and all that stuff. So I'll take a motion to approve the payroll change for Ryan.
I'll make that a motion.
Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second.
A second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Closest sign, motion carries. All right.
I think last time Marilyn did payroll eligibility damages or increases Dan was gonna be gone and I think we did them like a month or two ahead of time.
Yeah.
Basically signed them that they were gonna be effective January or July first or whatever. But she brought them in like May or June, so that it was just automatic. I mean, they'd come in anytime.
Yeah.
You know, and then, then they'll just be effective on that, whatever rate it would say. New employees, obviously, before they start, is the same thing, you know, we just gotta have it in there before they would start working for the counties.
Now I'll take some fault on this, obviously.
Yeah.
I am new, so had no idea that this needed to be done and.
Just try to get them on it, and try to get them here before.
Lost in the shuffle of things, so, yeah, yeah.
You got a liquor license?
Yes.
Ah, okay.
Thirsty dog.
Thirsty dog.
Motion to approve the liquor license?
I'll second it.
Moving second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closest sign, motion will carry. Keep your water in the hole, but.
Mm-hmm.
Revenue for the city and the counties.
That's right.
Is there an amendment to law enforcement today?
Two of them.
Two of them. All right, we got, uh, Grafton and Kansas. Take a motion to approve the amendment to the law force agreement for those two counties.
I'll make a motion to approve those.
Is there a second? Well, a second. A second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closest sign, motion will carry.
That's the last year in Northwood, too, right, Jesse?
Yeah.
Sometime this summer that'll have to get negotiated.
It's a ten starter, isn't it?
Done by?
Well, it'll be done by the fall.
So that will be, it's, it'd be July thing or January thing, right?
Yeah.
I think it's calendar year, yeah. Yep.
Okay. Okay, done anything on the buildings and grounds right now? I guess we can discuss those.
I've had one told. Midwest ever get back?
No, emailed again.
Are you trying?
Email now, man, and the, and a different company now on the mold stuff, mold there testing, so waiting to hear back from bones.
It's not raining, so we're okay.
Yeah. And it's, I mean, yeah, it's probably spring work, but it'd be nice to get figured out what it's gonna take. What, what it's actually wrong with it.
Yeah, yeah.
Get it fixed and stop the leak in mold. All right, uh, so I'm gonna go, um, Melissa, you on there? Is she on there?
Yep.
Yep.
Brian? Uh, I'm working with, uh, Hamlet Town City Council meetings tonight for Homebase Iowa. And then, um, I think, yeah, and then I'm working on the, uh, summary events calendar, so I have those almost ready to go.
Perfect. Perfect. All right. Anything else, guys?
Any, anything out on the lots?
Yeah.
Any interest from anyone anywhere? Nothing?
Um, no, but I have some things I have to follow up with.
Okay.
Are we gonna, you know, you had contacted Jeff about the covenants out there, and he said he never heard back from them. I would hope that he's pushing them a little bit, cause I think it's been like a year now.
Or more.
Or more. Have you heard anything from him, other than the fact that he had not heard back?
Nope.
And looking through that, what are we worried about?
Uh, we're.
Putting apartments up on top.
Cause there's no housing allowed on that, those twenty-two acres. So we're hoping that we can get that, um, kind of striked from the covenants as far as maybe, or maybe just put second story housing, so that there's not like a housing development that goes there.
Right.
And you may not do it anyway, but it would be nice to have if somebody came in.
Well.
And wants to put something down below that they could put apartments up above.
There is some state, federal or state grants for that kinda stuff, I think, if they do that.
And that's a good thing is that at least the apartment will offset the costs to the investor. And that's probably what they look at, too, is they go, if you can rent that out. This way, if something's not in the lower level, they can still at least maybe recoup their costs, most of their costs on the, the apartments.
And for somebody that's working that doesn't have a license or something like that, it's ideal.
Yep. Especially if it's affordable.
So, but that, yeah, it's been over, maybe, or.
Yep.
All right, I'll, I'll respond to that email.
Okay.
Thank you, HJ.
All right. Thanks, Melissa.
You bet.
All right, so, I don't know, People's Service is not here, but we do have a couple bids that we talked about here the last couple weeks. Um, one is for ten four twenty-one for putting the drains in. And the other one's for sixty-five oh nine for some updates on valves and some noise and pump stuff.
Yeah, and there's probably gonna be some labor with that, but that just looks like parts. So I, I don't know if they'll do it when they come up or if we can have a local plumber do it. Um, we'll figure that out, I guess, but.
Stuff ordering.
Yeah. I would motion to approve both, both bids for the water treatment plant.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Moving second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closest sign, motion will carry. We don't need a sign.
No, I just told Jake to.
So, back to Teresa.
Uh, I'll take it.
You take it.
Well, actually, I give them, so Jackie got them.
Jackie's got them.
Cause then when they come through, then you'll know what they're for. And I'll let Jake know to attack those guys and get them on the schedule for whatever works.
Okay. Yeah, might take a little while to get concrete guy.
Yeah.
Stuff to do.
Might be inside work, so it might.
Well, maybe not. Yeah, they might be hopping at it.
Cause if there's something to do.
Indoor space.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, uh, department heads, I guess we'll go to talk. You got any more?
How's things going, Jesse? Good?
Going good.
Good. Glad you're.
I've got a couple things, guys.
Okay, go ahead, Mark.
So the, I sent out an email this morning for the safety meeting. It's scheduled for next Monday. Um, Public Health has a conflict. They've got a service area two meeting at the same time. They'd like to, they wanted to push it back to ten o'clock, but I know that you'd have to stick around longer than you'd probably like, Mark, so. Um, and then it's also payroll, uh, turn in date, so that, I know in the past, Kimberly's requested maybe move it to a different date and stuff, too, so. If anybody doesn't have a, a problem with that, we could maybe permanently move it to the third Monday of the even numbered months. Um, that should drop it off of conflicts with payroll and probably that service area two meetings. I think those are always consistently the second Mondays also.
Okay. It doesn't matter to me, Mark, and we can always push back to ten, too, but I mean, it's, I'm here most Mondays anyway, so, I mean, you know, either way, it works for me.
Seventeenth is the holiday, just so you know where.
Yep.
It's President's Day.
Uh, yeah, probably.
Yep, it is.
I know. Set it up what works for the, works for the majority. I can make it work for me, so.
Okay, I'll just watch your email on that. And then the other thing was, uh, I just wanted to kinda speak a little bit on Rich's frustrations with the, the FEMA grants and stuff. I definitely can understand that and, and sympathize with him on the trying to hit the moving target with anything related to FEMA and their processes and stuff like that. But one thing I can maybe make a comment, too, is use this, this small, uh, disaster that we had as a, a learning process and a, a learning event, so that if we ever were impacted to the extent that maybe Northwestern Iowa was this past spring, that we've been through the process once, we kinda have an idea of what it's gonna take and, and stuff, and so that we're not doing it a, a first time or, or whatever, under circumstances like that. That's, you know, that's the one silver lining to it, I guess, I know. And every time you do it, it's gonna be a little bit different, but again, every time you do it, you, that you've done it before, it's vaguely familiar, too. So there is some similarity, although it's, every time it's a little bit different, then there's.
I agree with that new staff and whatnot, but it's just every time we, every, every five years, we get a disaster and it's new people, new rules, new requirements, and it's like.
Uh, you're, yep, I.
We get a big one, obviously, yeah. We don't wanna. Go meet it.
No, we'll, I mean, we'll know the difference between just a general five inch rains where we have to put some barricades up versus a.
You know, I, I get what you're saying, Mark. It's just.
Yep.
Man, it just never, it, yeah.
Yeah, it's, yeah, and just like that, the UEI number, it's, it seems like a silly thing to me, but that was, it's a process they, they, they have to go through, and I'm sure the state's probably shaking their head, too, when they get the request from FEMA for stuff like that, and it's like, okay, but, so.
It is amazing between the two counties when you get different people and how much the differences between the people that come to Mitchell County for flooding and the people that came here, or vice versa. There's different things going on because of the personnel that come.
Well, on top of that, with the new administration in here and the talk that's been going on between what's happened out east and out west in the last two years, this could all change.
Yeah.
So.
The only thing that's guaranteed is nothing will stay the same.
Stay the same, exactly.
Yeah, pretty much.
And I will put it this way, when you get called out, we're probably gonna be looking for money, so then we'll, then we'll keep better track of it, so.
Right.
But otherwise, yeah, it's, yeah. Base, case by case basis, so.
Yep.
All right. Anything else, Mark?
Nope, nothing more. Thanks.
All right, anybody else?
I don't know if you guys know, there's protesters out there.
Yeah.
What's that?
The what? The protesters outside?
What are we protesting?
I don't know.
It's, the. Oh, is this the, is it the, uh, immigrant thing?
No, it's, it's, there was a thing on.
I don't know.
It was.
I mean, it's all over the country.
Worth County Iowa Democrats.
The sign said thirty times the charm, I think is what it said.
Was that passed on there or?
It's just one guy walking. Fifty marches. I don't know. It's something that got emailed or texted to me last night, but.
But he's, he's on the sidewalk, so.
As long as you, you guys, you're monitoring, that's good.
You can protest all you want.
I'm on time.
Yeah. Is he protesting or he's going, yay?
Thanks for the update.
Yeah. No, we haven't been outside, so. We keep the shades shut.
We come in the back.
Well, whatever. Yeah, good. Okay. Uh, Jerry?
I got nothing, man. I'm here for the wellness meeting.
Okay, wellness today. Did I miss that? I think I got Public Health, too.
My calendar says wellness, aye.
Okay.
You said Public Health, yeah?
Did we get an email?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
Okay. I think.
Friday, she sent a reminder.
Gotta look through my emails here first. I think I got Public Health due to ten, so. All right, uh, maybe that's what I have today, not Public Health, I don't know. Uh, nothing else. Supervisor Weekly, I guess.
Uh, I went to the meeting in the morning for the supervisors. I really thought we'd get a lot of new information. As far as I was concerned, we didn't get very much at all. It was the same old, same old. They haven't figured much out. We did have a senator there that I think was, had, was on, was worked quite a bit with House File seven eighteen.
Yep.
And he said that was kind of a, the way it got set up, it was kind of the beginning deal, and they don't really have, as we said, we found out last spring, they don't have an end game plan.
True.
But the problem that, why this arose is because we haven't changed our property tax formula since the twentieth century, and we're in the twenty first century. And they wanted to update it, but they're not quite sure in all the directions they're gonna go to update it as far as that goes. I did pick, nobody said anything about the fact that the three dollars and fifty cents wouldn't be in effect in twenty nine. Didn't go back on that one bit at all, but he did mention, you know, that this is just a starting deal.
And they still know there's a ton of people not gonna make it.
Yep, unless they just go bam right now. And a lot of stuff that we've talked about in here, about Medicaid not paying. And uh, they did have a couple lobbyist stuff there, about lobbying and that kinda stuff in the state. Uh, one of the things they did bring up is the same thing we've talked about for the last year or two here, that the fees are not covering what the services are costing to provide those fees in the, in your system. That needs to get out. Oh, then there was quite a few complaints on the postage for what gets mailed out in the spring, this new, and of course, now you're gonna send out future bonding. You gotta let them know about that, and they just said that that just needs to get reformed completely. Um, eminent domain came up. You know, Kelly Garcia was there with H H S, nothing new.
They're still unsure.
They're still unsure, everything's pretty unsure, they did say though that, and we knew that a year ago too, that when they get done with uh, mental health, it's gonna move to public health. That's the next one.
They already changed that, so.
They're gonna do some changes there, right?
Yeah, the discussion of the, the public health change will be next on the list, once they get.
See, I know.
H H S gets this section figured out, then there will be public health, so.
Anything else, you were there.
Yeah, no, the, the H H S thing, yeah, they still don't have an end game on that, or they do, I guess, but they don't know, they haven't appropriated any dollars for this new uh, A S O to take over. They don't know what they're gonna do come June thirtieth, because that's when everybody's gone. And you're done, basically, if you're, if you're, you're shut down, the funding's cut off, but there's still gonna be bills coming in, in like July and August for some of them services before, you know? And uh, that's what some counties are worried about is, are we, what, what's gonna happen? Who's gonna be responsible for those dollars?
Who's gonna make the payments?
Yeah, and supposedly the, the A S Os are gonna just take, as they come in, they'll take them and take care of them.
Well, that'll work for real.
Then the next thing with those two was that they, with um. Oh, shoot, Ruth, what is, what's her, um, our advocate?
Our advocate.
Yeah, who's gonna pay for that? Because that gets built back to the regions. So budget time, we may have to set some money aside for that in case, in case we do have to pay that, but that hasn't been figured out yet.
We, we need to remember that at budgeting here, we might have to earmark some money for that.
So we won't be able to make budget, but yeah, we have to budget for it.
We gotta, we have to be prepared, you know?
But uh.
Yeah, we have to be prepared for it, so, yeah, it's kind of the way I took it, but.
Legislatively, did they talk about the bill that was in committee last week about not using public dollars to pay lobbyists? So like our ISAC lobbyists, I don't know how that would work, but essentially, our dues that go to ISAC to pay the lobbyist salaries, essentially, they're squishing that stuff?
They didn't say nothing about that article.
No, I just didn't, I just didn't know if that came up or not.
Probably, being lobbyists, they probably didn't wanna mention that.
Yeah, I didn't hear about it either.
Why, why belong to ISAC if you couldn't, something on, I mean, just 'cause you can go to a meeting?
Right.
Yeah, they didn't mention anything about that.
You know, it's not just against the counties, it's the league of cities, it's.
Oh, absolutely, it's everything, yeah, it's more, yeah, we're, ISAC's bigger than that. All the, their lobby, their, their groups, whatever, I don't know if they're really lobbyists or they're just.
I don't, I don't know that it'll go any, excuse me, anywhere, but I think that it's just something to keep your eyes on too, so.
If it's on the dock, it is probably gonna go somewhere, still.
Fourteen hundred bills, they said, right now.
For sure.
There's actually more than normal.
And that, yeah, normally it was like twelve.
Yeah, they said fourteen because it's uh, the uh, parties, basically the, the minority parties have changed, you know? When, you know, uh, with the federal side of it, and then it also changed in the House and Senate. Um, so now you've got Republican control, and they're just, they're saying there's more bills than normal coming due.
These legislators, they can't stay ahead of fourteen hundred bills, they need help in there someplace, that's where those lobbies come in.
Yeah. So, like you said, it's not an ISAC, like the legislative planning committee, they didn't send anything out to us, I just, it was some light reading that I was doing.
There hasn't been any emails from about that one.
No.
I mean, it could be this week possibly, just maybe there's a little discussion on it, but.
It did pass out of the subcommittee meetings, so.
Okay, there we go. Be discussed at some point, alright? I didn't have anything last week, so.
Um, all they had on top of that was care connections, um, basically working on shutting that down. Uh, but same discussions, how are we gonna pay, what are we gonna do, Melissa's trying to get this stuff figured out. Um, and we're looking at, with employees, we don't want them to leave because we still need to maintain this until the end. But we don't want them to sit and wait, because if they're offered another job, yeah, we obviously want them to go, so. Worst case, what would happen, I guess, if people start taking jobs and we start losing employees, we're gonna have to hire some sort of temporary or do something to make it through to the end of June. So that's a little bit of a thing, so we're, and we're also gonna offer, uh, there's quite a bit of money that will go back to the state. Um, so we're gonna offer some severance for these people, and then maybe there'd be a few, 'cause we don't know if they're gonna get rehired, nobody knows nothing.
If they close us out, we have to send money back to the state.
Yes, because we do.
Isn't that our money?
Uh, well, it's, it's the money that the state funds.
Oh, okay.
It's not a property tax.
Gotcha, okay.
But there is, there is, there is a few things, like there's a vehicle that I think if that got sold, that would get divvied back up to the counties. Cause we don't have, we didn't, we don't have like brick and mortar, none of that.
Right.
We've never been that region, but there's just a few things that the region does own, that I think would go back to the counties. Uh, but otherwise, yeah, there's, there's like three hundred and sixty thousand dollars or something, uh, as on pace now that if we don't spend it down, that it will go back to the state, which is one of the, the forty million dollar fund that's sitting there. And there's only one outfit that does not have enough money, as of right now.
Services and a little money back from a vehicle.
Right, yeah, yeah. So, they're looking at severance to try to keep, maybe keep the employees around, but then if something, if they don't find jobs or whatever, and they make it to the end, they'll have some money to get through another, you know, three to six months, to find a job to be able to still maintain and pay their bills and support their families, so.
Alright.
Split it in.[1745.04]